Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this session of the State and City Council. It is April 2nd in the year of our Lord 2018. Whatever, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The council is present? Hello, Priscilla. And staff is here. I guess we're ready to go. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? Are there any additions or declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, onreyness, whatever?
Mr. Mayor, I am a Villanova fan, first of all. Sorry about that. And secondly, I did attend one meeting of the teen center in September of last year just to see what it was about.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I also had been involved with the group originally last summer, but I have not spoken with anyone regarding the leasing of this building outside of Mr. Campbell since last summer.
Okay. Well, everyone knew this was my original idea, right?
We'll give Gus credit for that.
I'm trying to get a rise out of somebody here, but it's not working, so we'll just go on. Let's see, presentation comments from the public. And please tell us who you are and where you live, please.
I'm Shawn Hazel. I live at 198 Fernridge Road, serving as the pastor of Calvary Lutheran Church, interim president of New Growth Ministry, the organization that's requesting the lease. I've been a pastor here for six years, and one of the first concerns that I begin to hear in my conversations with the community was a need for a place for teens and working with teens, especially with the increase of amount of couch surfing teens, basically homeless teens. And this was on the mind of my church, as they called me, which they wanted me to be primarily concerned with work with teens. So this has been my focus as part of this six years. As part of that, I also worked with New Growth, respite care for parents who are in crisis so that the children could be cared for within the community instead of entering the system. And so out of that grew this possibility of working with the city on a collaborative project with a property that's owned but potentially to be developed into the park. So recognizing that for the time being, as it stands, that we could potentially use that space for a teen center. In a recent study I read about incarcerated teens, they were surveyed about why they were there, and one of the clearest answers that came through was they were bored. They had nowhere else to go. They put their hands to use, but it wasn't good use, and that's why they were incarcerated. I believe that we provide a safe place, an interesting place, a place of positive relationship and safety, that a teen center like this would be of great value to our community. So if those who have been a part of the team, if you could just raise your hand, please. And many of these people I've met just for this project, and it's a diverse team from a lot of parts of the community, a lot of different areas of influence. And so the excitement for me is that that represents a lot of circles within State and in the area. I noticed as we got to know each other, they all have a strong community focus and obviously a strong interest in building up teens for the sake of their future leadership, that all of us in some way have benefited to be here today in a city council role. To have teens have some of that built into them by positive relationships and a safe place means that they'll be future leaders as well. So with that said, I just want to speak in support of the teen center, of course, and I hope as you have the opportunity to meet some more of the team, that you'll see where they're coming from and their hopes for that place as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Sandra Fixon.
Hi. So I'm Sandra Fixon. I live just outside of Stateon, and both my boys, as of next year, will be at the high school. And I am a part of a group that's kind of gotten together to talk about the proposed teen center and see how we can help move it forward. And I have a vision for it, basically where my boys can go if they don't feel that they can come to us or a teacher or an educator to help them through hard times, that they could come to the center and seek advice or guidance, you know, have friends that they can hang out with. So I'm in support of it, and it's more so for me from a non-denominational perspective. But I do really love the idea of it being a little bit of faith-based in there too, or a little faith in there, because I do think it's important for kids to be either exposed to that or not, but it be their choice. So I support the teen center and what it could bring to our community.
Okay, thank you, Sandra. She lives at 414-52 State and Syle Road Southeast, and we are happy to have you here this evening. Veronica Rodriguez Teal.
Hello, I'm Veronica Rodriguez Teal, and I'm a teen at...
Where do you...
Well, I live on 1025 Ridgeville Court, and I currently am attending Stateon High School. And I believe that having an area or a safety place for teens to go to when they don't have a place is amazing, because I never really had that in my beginning of being a teenager. I'm 18 now, and I have siblings, and we have gone through a lot, and I feel like that having that the teen center being in our community will help a lot of the teens. If they don't have a safe place to go to, they can go, and they have mentors they can talk to, and just a welcoming place in the community for the teens that feel like they're unwanted, and they can go to a place where they feel wanted, and they... A place where they feel like they can be a part of something if they're maybe not getting that home. And I've definitely come from that part, so I know how it is being a teen and not really having that. So I believe that this community really, really needs this. It could help a lot of our teens around the school do better, and it can just push this community to be better and greater. And I just, I see a really big future in this teen center, and I really hope that it makes a positive... I know it will be a positive outlet for our teens. So thank you.
Thank you. Heidi Fosmark.
Hi, my name is Heidi Fosmark. I live at 42058 Kingston Lions Drive in Stateon. I am one of the founders of New Growth and also the vice president. And we've been in business, I think, since 2011, I believe, and we've just seen an increase in numbers of calls for teens for staying overnight. We actually have... What New Growth is, is we have host homes, and we work with Safe Families for Children, which is a global organization, and even Safe Families for Children, a lot of their phone calls to our teens. And so we're just, we're looking for something for them to go after school. And one of the reasons why I wanted to say something was because to let you guys know what's actually going to be in the teen center, why we're going to be around. We're looking to have help for homework. We're looking to feed them after school if their parents aren't around. There'll be a gaming room, there'll be arts and crafts, there'll be hopefully a library of some sort. There's just a lot of opportunities that will be there for our teens to stick around. And so, yeah, I'm just looking to make things better for them.
Heidi?
Yes.
Just for my benefit, would you reiterate those groups that you're already working with or businesses? I don't know if they're businesses...
Oh, Safe Families for Children?
Safe Families for Children?
Yes.
Okay. And that's located...
Actually, there's an office in Salem, but they are all over. It started out of Chicago, and they're all over now.
Sandra, you recall some New Growth ministries?
I'm sorry?
New Growth ministries as well?
New Growth ministries, we're our own thing. We work with Safe Families, kind of run their program, but we also wanted to do other things, which is part of what the teen center is. So that's why we have our own name and our own 501.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that didn't get a green slip? If not, we'll go on with this. Let's see. First of all, the consent agenda, and then I have a proclamation to do, but can we get some action on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move we accept the consent agenda as written and submitted to us.
Okay. There a second, please?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Chris. I've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Everyone has a copy of it. Everyone got to see it, read through it, okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing no opposition, we'll declare the motion passed, and we'll go on to our first order of business other than public presentations, and that is a child abuse proclamation by And this comes to us... Well, it comes to us. City of Stateon, Marion County, Oregon, April 2nd, 2018. We proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas every child deserves to live in a safe, loving, and caring family environment, and this is a proclamation. I need to read that, too. Whereas in 2017, there were 11,843 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon, and of those reported cases, 1,255 were victims in Marion County, and 49 of those victims were from Stateon. Whereas, we endeavor to join together as individuals, organizations, and government agencies to prevent child abuse in our county by providing opportunities to educate, train, and support caregivers by raising awareness of relevant topics, including child development, basic care skills, discipline strategies, and goal-setting for parents. And whereas, by strengthening families and providing safe, stable, and nurturing environments that are free from violence, abuse, and neglect, opportunities are created for children's optimal growth and success, ensuring a secure future for our communities where the needs of children are a priority and the needs of families are met. Now therefore, the City of Stateon, mayor, myself, and counselors ask everyone to join together in protecting our children and to hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month dated at Stateon this second day of April 2018 and signed by myself as mayor. Okay, that's got that. There's something else. Some of you wanted to do something else. Here we go.
Yes.
Showtime. Ladies.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Julie Hilty with Family Building Blocks. We actually work to prevent child abuse and neglect by partnering with parents to break the cycles that they were raised in. So we're going to just do a short presentation. Family Building Blocks and Liberty House and the Marion County District's Attorney's Office are proud partners of the Marion County Child Abuse Awareness Campaign. This year's campaign focuses on prevention. It will be individualized through asking community members to raise awareness of child abuse by proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and for our community to consider their role in preventing abuse, and for leaders to wear blue ribbons and place pinwheels throughout our community. The pinwheel is a symbol of a happy, safe, and carefree childhood we want all children to experience. Our slogan is "Everyone has a role in preventing child abuse." Though at times it feels like an uphill battle, our community must remain vigilant to its prevention efforts. Salem will once again be marked at the Oregon State Capitol by the iconic blue ribbon tree that symbolizes the number of children and youth that were abused in Oregon in 2016, which the mayor just mentioned. The Marion County Child Abuse Prevention Committee consists of 16 to 18 nonprofits that gather together and wrap around parents and support families in our community. It's the hardest job sometimes, raising young children, and as Pastor Shawn mentioned earlier, that when parents are stressed out and living in crisis, that's when they need the support the most to wrap around their children and learn new parenting skills. So we're going to share just a little bit about some statistics.
Hi, my name is Kelly Peross. I'm the community engagement manager at Liberty House, and I just want to start with some serious stuff. Ninety-three percent of the victims were perpetrated by a family member or someone living in their home. The statistic, excuse me, the statistic alone reminds us that all families need support, and working with families is one of our county's most important investments. Our campaign incorporates a comprehensive approach that is geared towards supporting families, which is so important, why you see that we're all here together. We're not separate entities at this time. The mayor kindly shared those statistics with you about in 2016, those numbers were 11,843. Just in Marion County, 1,255, in Stateon, 49. Those numbers have increased of 6% since the last year. So we're trying hard. We're getting better at understanding what we're looking for. We're helping families to respond in appropriate ways, but we all need to do this together. Forty-one percent of those were under the age of five. According to the CDC, the estimated average lifetime cost for every victim of non-fatal child abuse and neglect is $210,000. This includes healthcare costs, child welfare costs, cost of involvement in the criminal justice system, special education costs, and productivity losses. Child abuse directly affects our workforce. Childhood trauma affects people's ability to learn. It affects their ability to process. It affects their health outcomes. It affects their ability to show up and do a job. So we're all invested as a community towards our children to make sure that if we pay attention early on, a lot of those things that we're addressing as a community in our adult population may be reduced. So the next slide, we're going to talk about how to prevent... Yes? Oh. Yes. Forgot I'm not technically... No, you have to do it. Okay. I like to lighten things up, too. So it's easy, prevent. And the number one piece is parents are important, and I will add to what was said earlier today is adult mentors are important. I wish there was an owner's manual that we were given when we came, when we started to love a child, that said, here's what to expect, like when we were pregnant. Here's what to expect when you're expecting. An owner's manual for children would be great. Here's what to expect the first year. Well, those books are about what are anticipated in their growth, because every stage is different. But I want to talk about teens. Who knew that we were going to be hearing this presentation day earlier? Teens are different. They seem to be pushing us away. They're really not. They seem to be pushing and shoving us away, but they're not. And I want us to think about that, that we need to stay involved. We need to regroup and readjust how we involve ourselves with those teens. And again, so parents are important, mentors are important. Report any suspicion or disclosure of abuse. We encourage everyone to undergo training on how to recognize the signs of child abuse and report it. And for some, when I was an educator, that was a scary thing. You can learn so much by calling the child abuse hotline, and those resources should be available to you. Anybody can pick up the phone and make that phone call and find out what's the right thing to talk about here. Everyone has a role in preventing child abuse. This is more than a police matter. Everyone has a role. Even as business owners, you can get involved in community initiatives and nonprofits that help prevent child abuse, whether that's in child abuse prevention, intervention, mentorship, housing, or another cause. By lending your organization's reputation and person power, you're lending validity to the good work that is already being done. I'm going to introduce Jillian to...
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jillian Fisher, and I am joining you from Marion County District Attorney's Office. I work on the child abuse team in our office doing child abuse prosecutions. Thank you for having me. I'm happy to be here. The next letter is V. Volunteers are needed. And I'm kind of going to tag on to the, it takes a village to raise a child. Volunteers are needed. Be available. We cannot depend on DHS the way that we kind of do tend to as the main source of child abuse prevention. There are so many places along the way before a child ever has any contact with a DHS worker where somebody else could have stepped in and volunteered to maybe prevent somebody ever having to ever have a contact with DHS. And that is not always volunteering with an organization, although I would absolutely encourage that. And any form of community involvement, you are likely to have contact with children, and if it's positive contact, then it's prevention. But not, but also volunteer with your family and your friends, jump in there and offer to babysit when you see your family members overwhelmed or overworked, or a neighbor, or just a stranger in the grocery store. I would always encourage a friendly word and a positive word to somebody who is clearly having a breakdown. I think my little sister had somebody. My little sister's a single mom. She was the victim of domestic violence while she was holding my six-month-old niece, and she is struggling being a single mom. She was at Sassy Onion a few weeks ago, and the people that were sitting next to her paid for her breakfast and told the waitress to tell her that she was doing a wonderful job. And I will tell you that she has told that story to everybody she has possibly been able to tell that to. So it's the little things, but volunteering can come in a lot of different forms. Educate yourself. This is a big one for me. Educating yourself on what child abuse is, on what child abuse looks like, including suspicious injuries, including resources where you can go to help provide support for people who, again, are in need of respite, or who are concerned about what to do if they think their child is being abused. This, from a DHS perspective, I've been on that team for four years now, and I will tell you, I have asked my sister, she has had a conversation with my four-year-old nephew about body safety. Her face turned very red when I asked her that, and she got extremely nervous, which then made me very nervous and uncomfortable for having asked her that, and it shut down the conversation. And it occurred to me that if it is difficult for me to have a conversation like that with my sister doing the job that I do, that it is difficult for everybody, but it's an extremely important conversation to have. So educate yourself so that you can have those conversations with people, so that identifying child abuse, acknowledging that it happens, isn't such a scary thing, and we move forward past the identifying it to reporting it when we need to. Finally, neglect, and neglect is abuse. Neglect cases are rising in Marion County. It is important to identify that neglect is harmful to children. It is not just physical abuse, but it is denying children the attention and support that they need throughout their life, positive attention and support. So that's also an important letter in the prevention.
Obviously, T, tell a friend or trusted adult. This is the perfect time to be thinking about that teen center. As these kids are going to this teen center, they're going to have that avenue of a place to tell a friend or a trusted adult. So that's really important to have that safe location for kids. So we're going to talk just a little bit about what can you do? I'm actually going to skip the video for the sake of time, and I'll go ahead and just do this part. So everybody has an I-will sign at your table right now, and this is something that we will never stop talking about, is what is our role? Individualized role. We can say, well, this is their job, or this is a nonprofit's job, or this is, the church should do this, or this business should do that. We want to be really individualized in thinking, what can I do? And on the back of your I-will sign are lots of different ideas of ways that you can work to prevent child abuse, and together, we can make a bigger impact. There's also, just wanted to let you guys know that there is a Facebook events page that includes our events and activities. And we're going to go ahead and invite you guys, this Friday is the kickoff for the Marion County, so all of Marion County, there's a kickoff at the State Capitol this Friday, and this is going to be hosted with the Salem Chamber greeters, so free breakfast, anyone wants free breakfast. And then kickoff on the Oregon State Capitol steps. We're going to have presentations by Secretary of State Dennis Richards, Marion County Commissioner Kevin Cameron, and Paige Clarkson from the District Attorney's Office. And at this event, we will be talking a little bit about the statistics, the sobering statistics, the iconic blue ribbon tree, and then we will be placing pinwheels under the tree as a reminder of what we want every child to have, which is a safe, happy, and carefree childhood. I just want to remember that parenting is so messy. It is so difficult, but it's always better with support. And these nonprofits that gather around this April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and throughout the whole entire year, we want all parents to know that we're here to help. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I know so many of you are actually already involved, from the city administrator to the police chief, to several of your city council. And we just want to thank you for your involvement already and the importance of proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Thank you for letting us be here. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, it's neat to have some experts on this stuff here. I'm in Walmart, and I run into this, to me, obviously frazzled mom who has a little kid, and the little kid is digging in something, and mom's a little frazzled, and she starts shaking the kid pretty severely. Now, being the true provincial gentleman that I am, I walk up and say, ma'am, can I help you? And she says, why don't you mind your own effin' business? Now what do I do? Walk away and say, well, that didn't go very well. What do I do?
I mean, I think there are lots of options. You can obviously resonate with the mom that it looks so frustrating, and it's really hard raising kids, but the next step, if there's no resonation with that mom, I mean, there is abuse or neglect happening, so you guys have the hotline phone number in front of you, and that is the perfect time to make a call. I know I could have Liberty House speak into that a little bit, because I'm not sure what information you need when you make the call, but do you want to speak into that, Kelly?
How about a...
It's whatever information you have. So the more information you can have, so if, for example, you happen to see that person walk through the parking lot, you give the license plate. The reality is, is the point of the hotline is to call so that it's being reported. In that scenario, unless you stood outside and waited for them to get in the car, it's unlikely that they're ever going to be able to identify that person. But what you did is what you could do was attempt to step in. The reality is, it's not going to succeed every time, but if you keep doing that, it's going to work more times than it's not, hopefully. But even if it only works once, if it catches her off guard and makes her kind of stop and think about exactly what she's doing, which will happen, then it's a success.
How about a scenario where I grab the kid and run to the front of the store? You don't like that one?
I would not encourage that.
How about this as a scenario? I grab a box of Cheerios, put it up in front of my face, so she can't tell who it is, and hit her.
Yeah, no.
Be a serial murderer.
I discourage vigilance to justice a lot, so...
I maybe shouldn't even offer to help, should I? It's neat to have these experts here that know the answers to these things. Thank you, girls.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any other questions?
And we will do whatever we can to help with this. You bet.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyway, what's next? There's got to be something next. Let's see, okay, that's done. No public hearings, no unfinished business, new business. Proposed lease for teen center located at Mill Creek Park. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We already had several speakers speak on this topic tonight, but before you, in the package, memorandum and a lease agreement, information's been provided by New Growth. Just as a reminder, earlier this year, we came before the council for a memo of understanding. As we work towards the lease, this is property that's located at 2800 Kendall Way. There's two pieces of property. There's Putney Property and the... There's two pieces of property, there's Putney Property and the Lambert Property. On the Putney Property is a triple-wide home. Last year, we purchased the property to be part of our new park, the Mill Creek Park, and currently, AKS Engineering is working with the city and with the community to help design that park. So on that property is a piece of house. It's triple-wide, and we were looking for what to do with that house as we worked towards designing and building our park. So the idea came up for a teen center. So the lease before you is the efforts and the work to come forward with creating a mutually beneficial agreement. In the past, we had to have some people have come forward recently regarding a nearby drug house. The memorandum talks about that. I know New Growth met last Friday, two Fridays ago now, with community members to talk to them and to speak with them. And the police chief is aware of the situation, and we've addressed that in the packet. Feels that the teen center should have a positive impact on the neighborhood, so we decided to bring the lease forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Questions and thoughts from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Brian?
Reading through this, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. The first one being that the ADA study that hasn't been done yet, correct?
No, it has been completed.
It has been completed?
It has been completed. It's been given to New Growth.
It's been given to New Growth, not to City?
Well, the city has the agreement, or the study that was done, and we've given a copy of that to New Growth as part of the improvements that they need to make prior to the center opening up.
What was the cost of the ADA improvements? Did it say in that study?
We haven't looked at the actual costs themselves. There are quite a few items related to egress and to access through doors, and I think in the bathroom as well. Part of the lease deals with or speaks to that, the ADA accessibility and the requirement that before the center would open up, that's number five on the lease, that they would take care of all publicly accessible spaces on said property, and work would follow state, local, and federal law.
And that's prior to opening?
Prior to opening, yeah. Prior to occupancy by the public is what the lease says. So what the lease says is, New Growth shall be solely responsible for bringing the subject property up to compliance with the ADA assessment completed by Northwest ADA Center for all publicly accessible spaces on said property. All work must be followed local, state, and federal law, and must be permitted, completed, and inspected prior to occupancy by the public.
And they're going to be able to meet that standard?
They seem comfortable that they can.
Okay. And one of the other things that had me concerned when Pastor Sean said potentially developed, as far as the parkland goes. I just want to make sure that that's right now in production, that at least the concept, conceptual design, that's going to be a park in the future. Just want to make sure.
Brian, another way to say that is that this teen center doesn't take precedent over our park development plan. That probably really needs to be understood by everyone.
Yeah, we have spent time, and we've been very clear from the beginning, and in the memo, I do try to address that, and the reality has been made clear from the beginning and early on in conversation with New Growth, that prior to the future park will come first.
Okay. Lucilla?
I just wanted to actually thank everybody that is in, has been involved in this. It is so refreshing to me as a city councilor when a group of citizens in our community get together with a common cause and purpose and something that it will, something that, to work on something that's going to make our community a better place to live. I think that that says a lot about our community, and I think it says a lot about the people that live here. And so I think this is a great idea, and I'm in full support of it, and am in full support of us doing whatever we can to support you as community members and volunteers.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Well, I thank the faith-based community for stepping forward and taking the ball and running with it. I also want to make sure that point number three in the lease is always present in your minds, that it's open to that Goth chick core, the hardcore punk that may not be a person of faith, but that is a teenager who seeks shelter. And that's your core.
Hardcore punk seeking shelter?
Well, I'm saying that it's open to all, not just people of faith. It's open to all teenagers, not just people of faith, not people that belong to New Hope or Fort Hills Church. But the upstarts in Mr. Esselman, Councilman Esselman's class, they're welcome there as well.
Okay, sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, do I have the ability to ask any questions of the group?
Just here.
At this group, but the group?
Okay.
So as I was listening to some of the briefings, somebody had mentioned that you might be dealing, that the volunteers might be dealing with some pretty serious issues, runaways, and I'm kind of curious, I was looking through the handbook, I didn't see anything with regards to training the volunteers. I saw that the volunteers are going to get background checks, which is good, but when dealing with some of those really difficult issues, there might need to be some training. So I just, I guess if there's anybody that can speak to the training that the volunteers...
Yeah, no, no, please.
Yes, as with, we did with Safe Families for Children, that program, we had, everybody had to go through training. So there is, there should be some training in the notebook that you guys received, but we're developing a different kind of a training for every volunteer that goes through the program. Depending on what they're volunteering for, we'll kind of switch it up, but there will be someone who will train everyone. Background checks are absolute, and yeah, and we'll probably just keep developing that to make it, and work with different organizations too, to make that where, you know, we can get it as tight as we can.
And of course, you know that as a practitioner myself, the greatest training that you can give to volunteers is that they are not practitioners, and that they need to have resources to just be able to actually refer to other people in the community that do have the skills to deal with those problems.
Yeah, we do not plan on working alone. Plan on working with everybody we can.
So that kind of leads me to the second set of questions, which is, there's going to be a spectrum of violations, right, from smoking out front or smoking marijuana in the bathroom, or, I mean, some of those things just might happen. And I would assume that you guys have a code of conduct, or if you're prepared to deal with those various infractions in a different way.
Yes. We actually do have a code of conduct, and there is such thing as a neutral zone. There's a place in Salem, I don't know if you remember the name of it? The Home Center? Yeah, and we did a tour through them. They're pretty much doing the same thing that we plan on doing. So we get, we're getting resources from them. They are in a rough neighborhood, really rough in Salem, but it runs beautifully, and there are so many kids there, and rough kids come in there, and they feel welcomed. They feel like it's a second home. They get their meals there, they get mentors there, they get all the help that they need there. We want to be that place here in Staten for our kids. So we, whatever resources that we don't have yet, we're going to glean from them.
And those kids are part of the enforcement of the neutral zone. They want that safe place, so they actually help enforce it. So when they see violations of it, they're actually part of making it right. So it's beautiful.
Yeah. We'll have probably, depending on how many kids we get, but we're planning on having about four volunteers there at all times. And we're hoping to maybe open up some space, so there won't be little nooks and crannies everywhere. As with the home place, they have posters up everywhere, you know, drug-free zone and, you know, all this kind of stuff. So we will not allow the smoking or drugs or any weapons on the premises. So they'll have to check that in at the door, and we'll have a process for that too, procedure.
Thank you.
Thinking of resources, you folks are concerned at all about the isolation of that place? Does that enter into our thinking, our need to do?
You know, as has been stated, you know, it is a temporary location. I believe the pros, especially in terms of the team, work of city and community service organizations, this is the, a good case scenario, but not a best-case scenario. And you know, so that was part of the inner conversation with the neighborhood group. And, you know, if we could put a house equidistant from all of our schools that we'd be serving, that'd be the perfect case scenario, but, you know, unless you know something else.
Pastor Hazel, would you enlighten me, at least me, on that meeting, that Friday night meeting, a week and a few days ago, with the flyers around the neighborhood? How did that go? I haven't heard anything as far as results of what came out of that.
Through the work of our team, we had 160 houses that received flyers, varying levels of interaction there. The flyers were given, sometimes there was conversations right then when those flyers were being given. It was at 7:00 PM in the evening on that Friday, and we had, I still, about 20 people there. We introduced the team, introduced the history up to this point, and then we had a time of questions and answers. And I think for me, most of those questions were answered prior to that time of open forum. The most powerful part was when people shared their hopes for that center. And I think that when that was presented before the community members who were there, they recognized that you're changing the equation. Even with the difficulties in the neighborhood, you're adding a positive place that the offset made sense. So we had no negative commentary coming out of that. It was a lot of, a lot of positive conversation, but I think the best conversation happened after we adjourned too, so.
Can I speak a little bit to that too? I went around and I actually passed out flowers, fl- flowers, flyers to the neighbors that are the closest to where the potential teen center will be. Ninety-nine percent were really on board. They were supportive, they were like, that would be great. There was a very, very small percentage that said, do you, are you sure, because there's a drug house nearby? And I just explained to them that we're working with the police department and the city and just trying to get all of our safety procedures ready and available. And through even just that small little conversation, people are wanting to volunteer. So we've got a great, all the neighbors that I talked to were just wonderful, wonderful people. So I didn't feel like it was a huge problem. There are concerns just the way that we have concerns, but I think that if we all come together and fight for our kids, we can be that light.
Well, yeah, I expected all of them to be wonderful people. That's one of the prerequisites for living here, but it's, that's nice, that's good to hear, yeah.
Oh, can I add something here, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
I actually think that that location, I know you guys, it's like the perfect location because it is still close to resources in town, still very easily reachable by the police department and other people, yet it's not right next door to anyone that would complain. Because teen centers tend to be kind of nimbey projects, you know, not in my backyard, as far as like right next door to another house. It's like, gosh, those teens are going to be hanging out in my yard, and they're going to be doing that. So this is kind of like barring it away so that it doesn't create that, but still, close enough to have access for the kids. So I'm excited. I think it's a great location.
Okay, super. Thank you. Anything else, folks?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There was a letter submitted by a member of the community addressing a concern he had with the clause on number seven of the contract. I think Mr. Campbell sent it to us this evening. I'd like to consider, have the council consider that language, change in that termination clause.
I've got a copy of that. We probably should read that into the record here, into the possibilities. Let's see. The present wording on number seven is, in the event the city requires the use of the building, or if the building needs to be removed from the location, or New Growth, the applicant here should decide to vacate the building. Written notice to terminate at least 30 days prior to the termination date shall be provided to the other party of the agreement. Termination can occur at any time and for any reason or purpose. Okay, that's the language now. David Nielsen proposed this. Termination of this agreement by the city can occur at any time and for any reason or purpose stated or not stated, including but not limited to the city requiring the use of the building or the planned removal of the building. A written notice to terminate the agreement must be provided by the city to the other party in this agreement at least 30 days prior to the termination date. It is understood that any termination of this agreement by the city is free of any obligation or expectation of the city providing any alternative building, location, or resources to the leasee. And he's suggesting that this be included or replace the proposed lease agreement, number seven. So...
I move that we accept David Nielsen's wording and replace our wording too. David Nielsen explained, for those of you who didn't see the letter, David Nielsen explained that there used to be an A-frame where the water treatment plant is now, leave use by Boy Scouts, there's some feeling, or some harsh feelings when water treatment needed that space, and the fact that the city should provide an alternative space, except not by teen.
Mm-hmm.
But this says, it just clearly says that the building is there, that as long as this thing's in place, New Growth can use it, and within 30-day notice, we can say, hey, we need to take this and turn it into a park, or take over the building and turn it into Hank's Wedding Chapel, or whatever.
Hey, I like that.
And give them 30 days' notice.
I think it's clear the way it is right now.
But the last sentence is the one that's the key, the city is free of any obligation to or expectation to providing alternative housing.
Yeah, I don't, and kind of the problem I saw with it when I read David's thing is, I don't think putting it in there and not putting it in there changes the community expectations whatsoever.
But it's a clarity thing. That's why I'm...
I mean, we didn't have anything in there about doing anything near the community garden. You know how everybody here thought that we needed to definitely do the community garden? I didn't see that in writing anywhere.
Those were personal promises, and it's going to...
But what I'm saying is, is that we've talked here tonight about personal things that were already given, that New Growth understands, they put it on record, that they understand that this is a temporary situation until there, it's on record. I just don't see the need to go back and change everything and...
I'll second your motion, Mark.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to, I guess, replace Article VII with...
Replace Article VII with the proposed Article VII.
There's another thing, another point he makes, and this does impact the future of Hank's Wedding Chapel, and that is, the building being leased, and it does not include the use of the large shop building, which is on the property. And I'm wondering if that shouldn't be incorporated into this thing too?
No.
I don't know what kind of future Hank's Wedding Chapel has, but you just never know.
Vegas of the Northwest.
Bad. Okay, so we've got a motion to insert, replace Article VII with one proposed by a member of the community? And is there any more discussion on this? We haven't got to the main agreement yet. This is just on that replacement of one paragraph with another.
Is your motion to accept the lease with that change?
Yes, it is.
Okay. A motion to accept the lease with that change. All right.
I'll still second it.
Okay. And are there any other discussions?
Is there public comment?
Uh, go ahead.
We have to vote first, sir.
Can you wait?
No.
Can you wait till we're done with this? Okay.
I'll withdraw my second, so Pastor Sean can give his statement.
Go ahead.
I'll put my motion on hold and give it again after Pastor's statement.
Okay.
I'm confused on Robert's rules there. That's not the way we do it, but I just want to make sure. So in other words, you're taking out the 30-days requirement? I want to make sure, I can't, I can't read the text, so...
Here's the text, Pastor.
That'd be great to see that.
So it has nothing to do with 30 days. It just says that the city is not obligated to provide you with an alternative space.
That's understood. If that's really the only... That's understood, if that's really the only clarification's made in this. At any time. I mean, I disagree with the language, in the sense that you can't say it can occur at any time and then say 30 days later. You see what I'm saying?
We all...
In other words, it sounds like you can ask us to leave the building so you can use the space that day for a party, and we were about to have the teen center. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I believe it's a contract that says it can, you know, on November 1st, we can tell you you need to leave by December 1st. It's pretty clear that says you've got 30 days' notice, you know, that we can tell you on July 4th that we need it for August 3rd, or whatever.
But that's not what the wording says.
I'm not an attorney, but I read that as you've got 30 days...
It's confusing. So if you see where I begin there, and I get to the fifth sentence, and I finally understand that it's 30 days, it's a little confusing. That's what I was most concerned about, I didn't hear the 30-days language. I'm not, I'm not keen on the writing of it, but I understand the clarification that it brings, so...
How about...
Just wondering. I'm obviously not a voting member, so...
Pastor Shawn, how about the last sentence only, then? Are you acceptable at that? About the alternative building?
Absolutely. I mean, that's, that was never an expectation of the, of the group.
I think that's the concern.
It's just clarification is what that is.
It's a little fuzzy on the language, but...
So I move that we insert the last sentence to the lease agreement as presented.
Okay.
So, the city, "It is understood that any termination of this agreement by the city is free of any obligation or expectation of the city providing any alternative building, location, or resources to the leasee." I move...
So you're, your motion is to leave...
Amend, amend number seven as written?
Amend seven, all right. By adding a sentence?
"It is understood that any termination of this agreement by the city is free of any obligation or expectation of the city providing any alternative building, location, or resources to the leasee."
Okay, yeah, that's, that's your motion. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Uh, is there any other discussion? And all this is doing is replacing a sentence, or adding a sentence to Article VII of the lease agreement? Uh, Deputy City Recorder, would you like to poll the council, please?
Sure.
Alyssa?
Counselor Cronquist?
Aye.
Counselor Greidwalt?
Aye.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Esselman?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, so...
So the lease agreement was approved?
No, 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 that's just wording change.
I thought that, I thought that we changed the wording.
I move, I move now we accept the amended lease agreement.
Okay. I've got a motion to, to accept the amended lease agreement. We're making progress here, it doesn't look like it.
It doesn't, 'cause I just voted on something that I didn't know I voted on, but that's okay.
I've got a motion, is there a second, please?
And this is the motion to approve the lease with the amendments.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second, then, to approve the lease agreement with amendments, and is there any discussion? Further discussion? Alyssa, one more time?
Sure. Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Esselman?
Yes.
Counselor Greidwalt?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, now it's official.
Good job, guys.
We've got, we've got a lease agreement. All right, um, what's next? Okay, um, Ordinance Number 1018, Establishing License Requirements and Standards for Mobile Food Units. Mr. Fleishman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The issue that staff has put in front of you here is the consideration of enactment of amendments to the Business Licenses, Permits, and Regulations Code regarding what the ordinance calls "mobile food units." So, food trucks, or food carts, as most of us know them, are a relatively recent arrival here in the city estate, and I'm speaking from my own perspective, a welcome addition to the business community here in the city. However, there have been concerns raised about their operation, their placement, their potential impact on traffic flow, public safety, and compliance with the Land Use Code. And therefore, staff has developed the Ordinance 1018 to establish a requirement that food trucks obtain a license or permit from the city prior to operating, um, and that the license would be, would only be required when a vehicle is used for the purpose of preparing and selling food for immediate consumption, as drive-in, drive-through, curb, or walk-up service. It would not be required for any stationary sales operations, such as someone who has a lemonade stand that's not part of a vehicle, or even if it is part of a vehicle where there's no preparation of the food item, such as the ice cream truck who buys everything prepackaged, takes it out of the package and, and sells it. The staff has shared the proposed ordinance with several food truck operators who have been operating in the city. I met with the, two of the owners, and had a discussion with them, and as of this evening have had no comments back with any, expressing any concerns. The only question they had was, "Well, what's this gonna cost us?" So the regulations themselves did not appear to be an issue. In summary, the proposed rules would require them to have a license from Marion County Health Department, or, or the state, whatever is appropriate. They would be permitted only in zones in the city where restaurants, or eating or drinking establishments are permitted, or at a manufacturing facility where the primary customers are employees of the, of the manufacturers, of just pulling to the parking lot and, and serve people. They would not be permitted to set up in a street right-of-way, they'd have to be on private property, unless they are part of an event that has a street closure permit. The location of the food truck must not block a sidewalk, must not block drivers' visions at an intersection or a driveway, and must not take up the minimum, any of the minimum required off-street parking spaces if they're located at the site of a business. The proposed rules clarify that if any unit is in place for more than 72 hours without moving, then they need some type of land use approval, most likely site plan approval, through, through the Land Use Code. But if you're in place for less than 72 hours, then we would not consider it to be a land use change. The code, the Title V, Chapter 08, already specified that the fees for licenses and permits will be established by city council resolution. We usually bring before the council every year in June a resolution with the fees for that year. Should Ordinance 1018 be enacted, we will return at your next meeting with a resolution to establish the fee for the license that would be required by this ordinance. Since compiling the packet on, when was that? Wednesday afternoon, staff has actually come up with one additional suggested standard that we would like to be inserted into the ordinance, so therefore, the recommendation from staff will be to approve the ordinance with a modification, and then we will bring it back to you next meeting for final enactment. And that, the additional standard that we would suggest to be inserted into the ordinance is that the food truck be parked in such a manner so that it is at least five feet away from a sidewalk, so that customers waiting in line are not blocking the sidewalk. The issue came up at the end of the week, last week, when we saw somebody with customers blocking the sidewalk, and said, "Oh, that's, that's an issue that should be taken care of." So that's a summary of the ordinance. Again, the recommendation would be to enact it with the modification that I suggested, and we'll get that to you in two weeks for final enactment. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Dan, in, in putting the word, the news out, I guess, to food truck, food cart operators and whatnot, you got nothing back? I mean, is, this writing, there was, you had no comments back on pro or con?
I had a, I had a draft that was not in ordinance format, that was sent out by email to four different food cart operators, as well as the owners of two properties where food trucks have been coming in the past several months. And I got no response at all to the email. Once it was put into ordinance format, and we had modified the standards and the, and the language a little, I sent it out again, saying, "Hey, we've made some tweaks, here it is again, it's on the agenda for next Monday night, there'll be the opportunity to comment." And didn't get any response, and, not last week, it must have been the week before, on a Friday afternoon, I wandered up to Wolfgang's, and the Spud Bus, and somebody else was there, and I went and chatted with them, and again, they're, they weren't concerned about the standards that we're proposing, their, their question was, "How much, what's the fee going to be?" My answer was, "That has not yet been determined."
Are we putting, Mr. Mayor, are we putting the, the truck before the horse without that fee, because Spudology, Spud Bus, the red and white one at Wolfgang's, and James, who hosts the pod down on the corner of Water and Cascade Highway have all asked that same question? We don't have a problem with the ordinance, we already comply with the Marion County permits, but what's it going to cost us? So do we wanna just wait on this issue until we have a cost, and, and then look at it? I mean, to pass this without a cost seems almost premature.
I actually have an issue with the five feet off of the sidewalk. I mean, it seems like they would have an issue with that, because there's at least one, maybe both of the ones that are there every day, that that would directly affect immediately.
I don't know, they can't park, at Wolfgang's they can park further back at Chica...
But I'm saying that they don't. What I'm saying is, they don't, right now, so...
But Pick and Coop, they can park further back. I'm not seeing that as an impediment to their operation, 'cause they can move it, I mean...
I'm just, I'm just saying that we, we sometimes enact things, or we do things, and then all of a sudden, we have all of these people saying, "Well, if I'd known that, I would've shown up," or I, I, I don't know, I guess I, I...
I agree, I think we're not, I think we're premature on this, is what we're both saying.
Yeah, I just think that people need to be aware that we're just not looking at doing an ordinance, that we're looking at putting rules that are gonna really affect them on it, and give them the opportunity to be here.
And the number one comment, Mr. Fleishman, is, is how much is it going to cost? I've heard that from...
Just to avoid...
Four operators, and one host. And I agree with you, I appreciate the heck, the fact that the food trucks are there.
So, what would you folks like to do?
Again, I actually don't disagree with the ordinance, but I, but I think that in order to not get ourselves into a position where we're not, where we're looked at as adversaries, instead of people who are helping people make a living here in town, that we might wanna make sure that we have full disclosure and input from the people that it's gonna directly affect. That's all I'm saying.
Counselor, I have to ask, what more would you like for staff to do at this point? We've contacted through email, Dan's been out there to speak with them. What, I guess that's the concern I have, is, is what more at this point are you expecting us to do?
Well, I'm hearing, what's it gonna cost, but...
Yeah, my, my expectation, Mr. Administrator, is what's it gonna cost, because I don't wanna pass an ordinance and then have staff come back and say, "The permit fee is $500." That's indefensible. And I would rather wait to have that, and pass the ordinance in two weeks, giving people the chance to know what that cost is, rather than pass the ordinance and, and it may be $10, or it may be $1,000, but we need to, we need to have that.
I guess I'm not, I, I'm not, I, I'm not convinced that if you were to go up to the Spud Bus, if they're parked in front of Wolfgang's right now, and say, "We're getting ready to pass an ordinance that says that you cannot park in this spot, right here, anymore," I'm not, I'm not convinced that you'd say, "Oh, well, that's fine, what's it gonna cost me?" I, I just, I'm not convinced that that was the conversation that happened.
But the ordinance not saying they can't park there, it's on private property.
Huh? No, they can't park within five feet of a sidewalk, and they are parked right next, right on a sidewalk. It will affect exactly where they're at, and I don't think they're aware of that.
And also, the, what's the, OSU pointed one, the Pick and Coop?
Yeah, it's directly gonna affect them.
But right by the sidewalk.
Well, what would you folks like to do?
Yeah, the choices before the council at this point would either to be, to table action for, till your next meeting, when we can do more outreach and let them know about the five-foot modification?
And the cost.
And the cost. We could, or you could approve the first consideration with the modification, which would then require that it comes back before you in two weeks, anyway, so people would have, and we can still, and we can do the outreach. And thirdly, we could come back to you with a proposed, both the ordinance and the fee resolution at the same time. And, I mean, staff hasn't really discussed what a reasonable fee amount, what the cost of administering it would be, so we, we need to do that, and can come back to you with both next week.
Dan, I, I think I understood from an earlier comment that you'd actually done some outreach, you went and talked to these folks that have these food carts?
Yes.
And you suggested that this was gonna be up in front of the council tonight?
Yes.
What are you gonna do to get them to address the problem, or the concern, or the issue in two weeks?
Well, the only, what I see is different in, than two weeks than it was last week, is this five-foot-from-the-sidewalk rule that was not brought to their attention, because it wasn't brought to my attention until Friday afternoon.
Because it didn't exist.
Right. So, I mean, I see that...
Which kinda changes things.
Right, that, that would be the potential issue, particularly for the folks up at Wolfgang's, that, that it may be tight between that front porch and the sidewalk. I haven't measured it to know, or looked, to see how much room there is behind the bus when they're parked there. It may not be an issue, there may be five feet that they could move over, I don't know where that porch sits.
When, huh, when these people come back, these good folks that have these carts, and they keep saying, asking the same question, "What's it gonna cost?", that suggests monetary to me, I mean, you wanna put something in that will get their attention?
Yeah.
$500 a year? I mean, some, I mean, even...
My, my guess is it was, is likely to be a lot closer to 50 than to 500.
Well, but just something to force them comply, I mean, come to the meeting and tell us what...
If you wanna, if you wanna get them at a meeting, then yeah, let's call it 500.
Well, if, if talking to them individually and saying, "Hey, this is coming up, and we'd like some input," I don't think anyone's here that, from that group. I don't, whatever you can do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Couple of questions. Number one, I suggest a legislative subpoena, if you will, from the city council. Joking. Um, you made a comment to me, that's interesting. 72 hours is not mobile, and takes a land use permit to get it. Is that what you said?
What we, what we said is, if you're in place for 72 hours or more, then you're, then you need a land use permit.
Interesting, okay.
That's, that's what we've suggested to, to clarify that issue.
Which will make it something mobile versus...
Up, up to this point...
Mobile but not.
Up to this point, when food trucks arrived here, and for the most part, they, they were there, they were there for a couple of hours, and then they were gone, I wasn't saying, "Oh, you're a restaurant, you need to come in and get site plan review." But if someone was coming to park their unit there...
Right.
And not move it for six or eight months, or 12 months, such as the land use case you had several months ago, then I would say...
Understand.
Yes, so then the question is, well, what's the period of time at which you become a land use? You know, it's kinda like if you have, if you have a bunch of guys over to play poker every Wednesday night, that doesn't mean you are a casino.
I follow you.
So, so Dan, how does that impact all the coffee shops that exist, their carts?
They're not mobile. They're, they're existing. That's the point, and they have all...
They all have a grandfather clause. Might we want to put a grandfather clause in this too?
They've already gotten land use approval.
Kick, kick, kick whatever coffee.
Yep. Yep. They went through site plan approval 20 years, you know, 15, 20 years ago.
Mr. Mayor.
Up a Joe.
My last question. So come Summerfest time, all those vendors will have to have a food permit.
Come Su.
Summerfest.
Yes.
So the vendors that are on Third and the vendors that are at Pioneer Park, that had it in the past, will now.
If they're in a vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
If they.
I'm thinking of the Elephant Ear vendor.
Yeah. Who sells what, but yes, if they pull up in a truck or a trailer.
Yep. Gotcha.
In a vehicle, the code would require they get a mobile food permit.
So, you know, currently, we don't have any kind of monetary business license for anybody in town. And so is this going to be, this is going to change it? This one group has to pay a business.
Well, we do have, we have business licenses required for residential rental units, for marijuana businesses.
Pawn shops.
For secondhand stores.
But a coffee shop, they don't have to pay for a business license, right?
Liquor license.
Liquor, liquor, that's not a state, that's not a city requirement.
We have the, we have the city requirement as well.
Okay.
It costs money.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, so, but a coffee shop currently doesn't have to pay.
A restaurant or any other retail store.
Doesn't have to pay a fee for anything. So I was just wondering if this is going to, again, trying to kind of look through all of the complaints that might happen before they happen, you know? If somehow people are going to feel like this is singling out an area that shouldn't be singled out or something.
So, so Dan, looking at the city of Salem, which is the closest city I could find with food cart licenses, they have a $40 application fee, a $60 unit license annual fee, a $35 city inspection fee, this is in addition to Marion County's inspection fee, a $1,250 processing fee, and a $5 automation surcharge, whatever that is. So we're going to be charging people about 150 bucks for a food cart permit if they follow their guidelines?
That's Salem.
That's Salem. I don't, again, staff hasn't talked about what the number is. My, my guess is it would probably be closer to $50 than a year than any other number.
So.
But that's been the concern.
That is a huge concern.
What's it going to cost?
Right.
Okay. All right. Well, we're getting there.
So is it a yearly permit?
Chief Stevens, mayor and council, to, the second, just as an example, the secondhand stores, they have a permit and there's a hundred dollars per year. But what that covers is that covers the software that's run by the state that they enter their, their data into. And so that's why that, that fee is so high.
Because of a criminal aspect in it, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Priscilla, did you have a comment or thought?
I, I just asked if this is a yearly, is this a yearly fee? So people that are on the, on the streets two or three, or actually five days a week in different spots pay $50 and people that are at Summerfest, like a church group that has a van that might use it twice a year pays the same fee?
Correct. That's what I would, again, that, the fee hasn't been discussed yet, but that's what I would envision.
Right. And so why are we, again, was it where they're, were they're, why are we even looking at doing anything with these? Were there, is there a problem or an issue or do we foresee maybe there might be?
The concern that has been raised is where the units are placed and how they affect traffic flow, driver vision, access to sidewalks. And the other issue that's been raised is the land use issue and clarifying when, how long can you be there before you are considered a building or a land use?
Right. So we're looking mainly, in my mind anyway, because of safety issues, really. That's, that's the major.
They already have Marion County food permits in addition to Salem, so they're inspected by Marion County Health already by law, right?
I was talking about the, the access and the, and the problem with seeing around them and that stuff.
It's hard to understand two people talking at one time, so I couldn't hear either of you.
So Dan, my question was, they're already inspected for safety by Marion County to operate in the county. The food carts have a Marion County permit? They do.
My understanding is anybody who's preparing food.
Has to have.
Is supposed to have a permit from the county health department.
I know Foodology, Spud Bus, the red and white one do.
I, I don't know whether they do or not.
Quite prominently posted.
Okay. All right.
So they're, they're covered for health and safety.
And we're, we're suggesting that they, they show us that they have that permit.
That's fine. I don't know about that.
Prior to getting our license.
Okay. What was that second conversation that you missed?
The safety that I was talking about was not food safety. It was the public safety as far as having mobile units that are blocking people's vision when they're trying to make turns or.
We're concerned about traffic.
Being in driveways or other things. That's the kind of safety I was, I was speaking of.
We're concerned locally with preventing traffic accidents, not to main poisoning.
And that's exactly, that's exactly what I was going to say, is that, that has been an issue already with those that are in town, is they've parked in positions so that it blocks visibility as people are trying to get around the corners. They've been blocking sidewalks, that people can't walk down the sidewalks without walking out into the street. So it is an issue.
This is a fairly recent phenomenon in the community and that's probably why it comes to our attention. I have to confess a, I don't know, it's kind of an ignorance about it. I saw that the potato wagon parked there at the Pick 'n Coop several times and I thought it was Russ Strohmeyer's hot rod school bus. And then finally figured out it was something else.
The smell of potatoes got it.
Right.
Well, it just, it just didn't register that there were actually food carts in Staton. Wow.
Well, what's happened is the food cart lots in Portland have been developed into condos. The Goodman family had all the parking lots with the food carts on them and they're rapidly turning them into condos, which is displacing the food carts in Portland. So they're all heading our way or Eugene or San Antonio.
Oh, good. Oh, we're going to be a big city.
Yeah.
All right. What else? Where do we go from here, folks?
I move we table this until we come back with a cost and community feedback on the five-foot, just to make sure everybody's aware.
Okay. A motion to table this item? Is there a second?
I don't want to table. I want to come back with what we're going to look at, the fee and.
Okay.
Well, that's the same thing.
Okay. Well, then the motion dies for lack of a second. Sorry, Mark.
But then how do we, how do we withdraw this motion without tabling it? That's my classroom. There's an open motion on the floor before us.
Yeah, I just declared it invalid because there's no second.
Okay.
Right. But how do we, what do we do for council?
Direct them. Just direct them. You can just tell them, ask Dan to come back with it, what their concerns were.
I move we direct staff to come back with a motion that incorporates the five-foot setback that they're requesting and a set of fees and that we give the community two weeks to review both the five-foot setback and the, and the set of fees.
I think we've got, we've got the intent of that. I'm not going to repeat it.
Go for it.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay. A motion and a second then to send this back to staff and have the staff come back with a fee process and address sidewalk, yeah, sidewalk setback concerns. Questions?
I think a voice vote is fine. A voice vote.
A voice vote is good?
Yeah.
I was going to put a list on the spot again, but all right, we'll save her for another time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign? Hearing none, we'll declare the motion passed, five to zero. We'll see this again and a report on the current housing inventory. Lots of lively discussion there and thank you for bringing that to us tonight, Dan, I guess.
You're welcome. Thank you. And we'll be, we'll be back in two weeks.
Okay.
Looking forward to it.
Isaac, you're on the, you got it.
Great. Away with this one. Oh, okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm Isaac Courtney. Work as the economic development assistant for the city. And so this is a report that Dan had asked me to put together as part of some of the city goals in improving housing, making sure we know what the housing in Staton looks more useful if I speak to this.
What the housing in Staton looks like, that's better. So you have in front of you and part of your packet the full-length report, but I put together a short little presentation just to give you some highlights of what I found. So first off, I wanted to talk a little bit about the population of Staton. So these are all estimates from the American Community Survey from the Census Bureau. They're all estimates, which is important to remember. Last census obviously happened eight years ago. These are estimates from 2016 and a lot of them do have a pretty high margin of error since they're such a small town. It's difficult to get a fully accurate number, but these are pretty much as close as we can get. So Staton's population is at 7,875, estimated by the Portland State University Population Center to increase by about 15% in the next 12 years. The median age in town is 34.7 years. In terms of racial characteristics, we are about 84% white with a smaller portion around 14% Hispanic and then other races below that. Median household income is estimated at around $54,000, $3,899. And we have about 19% of residents living below the poverty line. Looking at the age of housing in Staton, Staton's obviously a pretty old community, but a good portion of our housing is around 30 to 50 years old. You can see from this graph right here that there was a pretty significant amount of new homes being built in the 70s and the 90s, big drop-off in the 80s. But since 2010, the last eight years, there's only been a 3.4% increase in new homes. And most of these new homes are single-family with very few new multifamily homes being built in the area. This is just a map. I guess it's kind of hard to see. But this is a map, you have probably a better version on the actual printed-out copy, that shows the age of homes in Staton. Each dwelling unit is colored by its age with the bluer ones, the darker blue ones being newer, darker red ones being older. And as you can see, most of the older homes are clustered around, as you might expect, the downtown area and some of these older neighborhoods right here. And then you can see the significant areas of new development, especially up here. Housing value, the real estate site zillow.com estimates the average home value in Staton at 261,700, which ends up below, just looking at local communities, ends up below Sublimity in Silverton, but it's more expensive than in Almsville or Salem. And this graph right here is from Zillow and it shows the value change over time with Staton in the green and Salem in the orange, just as a comparison. And as you can see, pretty much two communities following the same path, but with Staton always being ahead or above, not necessarily ahead. And then the median sale price according to the Marion County Census Office, looking at sales of homes from 2017 and the first few months of 2018, is $225,000, just to get an idea of what it costs to live in Staton. And then in terms of the monthly cost of housing, the average rental price according to the Census Bureau is around $824 a month, while the average owner costs are around $1,200 a month. And while I don't have any specific stats on this, just from kind of some personal observation, and I'm sure that other people have noticed this as well, it's very difficult to find rental space in Staton. There's, when I checked apartments.com the other day, there were only four apartments available. They were all relatively expensive, over $1,000 a month. And they typically get snatched up pretty quickly. You go on State and Community Connections and people are always looking for apartments. In terms of the cost of housing compared to income, there's a lot of kind of general idea that you should not be spending more than around 30% of your income on housing. And it's estimated that about 53% of renters and 26% of homeowners are spending more than 35% of their income on monthly housing costs. And you can see in this graph right here that the cost for renting is typically pretty low, typically lower than the cost for owning your own home, which makes sense. A little bit about subsidized housing. There's two types of subsidized housing in Staton. Number one is simply a subsidized mortgage program. We don't have any data on how many homeowners in Staton are taking advantage of a subsidized mortgage program. So then the other one that we actually do have some data on is subsidized rent. About 6.5% of total housing is subsidized housing, and this is a list right here of seven different developments in town that are subsidized multifamily or single-family housing with, you can see on the right side, it tells you if it's built for families or built for elderly people. In terms of household characteristics, about 49%, so pretty much half of all households in Staton consist of a married couple with one or more kids. And about two-thirds of those own their own home. Typically makes sense, families tend to own at a higher rate than single people. And you can see in the next, single mothers represent about a quarter of all, the total population and about a quarter of all renters. So they rented at a pretty high rate compared to the rest of the population. And there's a very small, I didn't even include it, there's a very small number of single fathers, but typically it's single mothers. 22%, another quarter of households are a single person living alone and these people are typically renters. And then there's a very small portion that is unrelated people living together. Typically, you might think of this in somewhere like a college town and it represents only about 5% of the total, but they do actually rent, they're representing 10% of renters. So they rented a very disproportionate rate to the number of people in that group. And then this graph right here just shows the percent of the total number of households that represent each of these household sizes. And then it's split up by renters and owners. And you can see that, that owners tend to actually be, you know, almost the majority of owners are just a two-person household. You might imagine this as a couple whose kids have moved out of the house, who are able to own, who own their own home, aren't worried about renting but own their own home. Whereas couples with kids in the house, who might have three or four people in the, in the household, they might be more likely to rent, just starting off a family. In terms of types of housing, there's actually a little mistake on the report, which I put a note on there. The vast majority of residential structures in town are single-family detached. This is, if you look at, it's split up by the total number of units in this top graph right here. About 64% of all units in Staton are single-family detached. This data comes from the city's Building Footprints database. So this is accurate as of last week. And then it also splits it up into multifamily dwellings, duplexes, manufactured housing, triplexes, and then other, which includes single-family attached, religious homes, commercial, mixed use, which have a very small amount of homes. Only about 17% of the units in town are multifamily dwellings. And then this bottom one just shows in terms of structures, 82% of homes, as in single buildings, are single-family detached. And then going down this list a little more. So as you can see, as is typical with a smaller community, a rural community, we have a very, very disproportionate number, amount of single-family detached housing and not very much multifamily housing. This is a map of houses in Staton that are colored by the type that they are. It's, again, kind of hard to read, maybe it's just my angle. But as you can see, the green represents single-family detached and that's obviously pretty spread out around town. And then there's a couple spaces that end up as these multifamily homes. And this blue around here, and then you can see other types around there. But in general, there's not a lot of multifamily housing in Staton. Then I looked at vacant buildable lots in town to think about kind of the future growth. There are 107 vacant lots in Staton that are his own residential, 93 of which are his own low-density residential and the other 14 are medium-density residential. I then took that, that number and the area of each of those lots and then based on the minimum lot sizes. and then based on the minimum lot sizes set in the city code, there are nine low-density and five medium-density that are able to be split up into multiple lots. And so in total, if you take the lots that are too small to be split up and the lots that can be split and add them together, there are 308 total potential and existing lots within the city that are zone residential that could potentially be used for development. Obviously, this doesn't take into account any sort of, you know, natural resource issues, sewage issues, whether or not the people who own them actually wanna sell them or use them for anything. And this is just an example, this is 715 East Jefferson, which is a lot that is zone medium-density, and it could potentially be split into three different lots. And then this part about housing quality. So back when I first started, I did a quick windshield survey of Staton homes. This involved driving around, passed every home in Staton, and I kinda did a quick eye and to see what in general the quality of that home was. I looked at a bunch of different parts of it, from foundation, roof, doors, windows, lot, everything, and scaled it from one to five, with five being the highest. You can see five is excellent, while one is deteriorated. This is recommendations I've taken from a couple of other housing quality surveys, these so-called windshield surveys. So, and then I, and then I took the full data, and as you can see, housing quality in Staton is generally pretty high. The vast majority of homes, about 90%, fall within the good or excellent range. This, of course, is just pretty surface level. I'm, I'm not a building inspector, I know very little about construction. This is based on what I could see driving by in my car. So a detailed building inspection might reveal that a lot of these places have structural issues, whatever. But this is the data that I was able to collect. And then a small number, about 8% of homes, are below the average score. So in general, housing in Staton is of pretty good quality. So in conclusion, Staton is growing pretty quickly. We should add about 1,000 new people in the next 12 years. So it's gonna need significant growth in new housing that's gonna likely have to outpace what the last eight years have looked like. The current stock in Staton is of generally pretty good quality, somewhere between 20 and 40 years old, with a small number still existing that go back to 60, 70, 80 years old. And most of them are single-family. And there's a pretty significant amount of land, if, you know, we don't even think about expanding the city limits or the UGB. It's a pretty significant amount of land within Staton that could be used for future housing need. Any questions? I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Isaac. Isaac.
Yeah.
If we, if I start, if I start asking you questions about drawing some conclusions from all this, it becomes sort of political, doesn't it? And you may not be paid to do that.
I was advised by, by Dan when we talked about this. Because I, I had, I have ideas, of course, but I wanted to stay back and let you decide if you want me to push forward on researching policy changes, you know, whatever can be done, if there's, you know, researching what are the things in Staton that we actually need. I just wanted to present to you what we have today and let you decide as the council what you want us to do with it, what you want us to do with it.
Without putting you on the spot too much, what is this, this percentage of our community that's rental housing? I don't know why that bothers me, but it, it does. It's, people have to live, I understa-, you know, I just, it just seems high to me, and I, I really don't know why. And maybe it's okay, maybe that's what everyone lives with. Junction City, Independence, McMinnville, Woodburn.
Well, I think that if you look at, Staton's median age is pretty low, 34 years old, and younger people are gonna end up typically renting homes. And especially, you know, with coming, kinda coming out of a financial crisis. You know, it's only been 10 years, but people still are unable to, you know, kind of recover enough time to be able to buy or anything, so, who knows? I mean, there's plenty of explanations, I'm not sure what the exact explanation is, but...
We're not out of line, Mr. Mayor. We've been doing a lot of research lately.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
So Isaac, you've shared this information with us. Tell me a couple of the possibilities of where to go next with it, that you're, you're saying you want the council to kind of decide what they're doing. Tell me what some of the possibilities might be.
Well, my understanding of the possibility is that you guys could recommend that I would go more detailed into this report, kind of speculate on some of the growth in Staton, you know, take some correlations between what are the characteristics of households and the population, and what kind of housing do those people need, and are we actually providing enough housing? And then if we aren't providing enough housing, if we need more triplexes in town, say, who knows? That's probably not gonna be the answer. But there might be a certain type of housing that we need more in town in certain places, and I could go through some policy recommendations. You know, if there's certain spots that say if we, you know, change the zoning on this lot, we would be able to get X number of new homes that we really need. I could go through and work with Dan and, you know, create a report on that. A report that would essentially recommend to the city council a set of policy changes or, you know, whatever it may be, that will ensure that we have the housing that we need for the population that we have. Pretty open-ended, sorry.
That's fine. Thank you. Anything else? Good job, Isaac. Thank you.
Very good.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, to follow up on Isaac's presentation and particularly his response to the questions that were asked. Back in the winter, spring, when the council was discussing your goals for the next two years, you included under the, the general goal of neighborhood preservation, completion of a comprehensive housing inventory, which this report kinda does, and the creating a housing strategy, which I see this as being the sort of beginning of a discussion of, well, what do you want? Do you want to have a strategy? What are the issues you see need to be addressed? In, in my mind, the primary issue that I see, I see two primary issues facing the city. One is maintaining the quality of the housing stock that we have today, both physical as well as its appearance and the impact that it has on its surrounding properties. And two, while we have a building permit pending currently at Marion County undergoing plan review for a four-unit building, it will be the first new multifamily housing in this city in over 15 and maybe close to 20 years. I think it was 2002 that the last multifamily structure was built. And there probably, if we were to do the analysis, there's probably the need for additional land within the city to be zoned for multifamily. There is only one vacant parcel of land that is zoned for multifamily within the city limits.
But that, that's, that says something about how you control which population that you want in your town.
And that is your job as the elected officials.
So that, you know, one of the things that, that I had brought up before when we were looking at these houses is how many young families I saw move to other areas, to Independence, because there were no single-family homes for purchase here. Man, people who had grown up here that wanted to stay in Staton, that couldn't buy a home here. And so one of the ways to, to deal with that sort of an issue is to try and encourage building of more entry-level, first-home-buyer-type homes.
Or affordable, multi-family, like Isaac said, there are only four apartments for rent, and Dan alluded to the fact that there's only a lot on Second in Florence, the lot by the old bowling alley, which is a parking lot for the hospital.
Right, but when you, when you build multi-
And the Gerard property, which is out of Florence.
Can I finish, Mark? Yeah. When you build multifamily rental property, that is, would not address the, the population that I'm talking about. So I guess with, going back to what Isaac has done here, is that's the kind of things that we need to look at, exactly. The kind of things we need to look at, and in order to look at that, we need good information.
Yeah, I think, Priscilla, you're right, we need more entry-level homes. We also need some sort of, as Dan alluded to, there's been no development. The last one in 2002 was the elder care facility, I believe, wasn't it? The Brookdale? For multifamily?
No, no, there was, there was a four-unit built on Locust Street.
Yeah, there's nothing built for affordable multifamily or affordable family homes, and that should be one of the things we need to look at, because those people are the people who are the driving force on Hawthorne and Belmont and everywhere else, and what can we do in this community to encourage that? You know? It's no secret that I'm looking at it.
Dan?
So I, I guess the question I raised to council is, would you like us to come back with policy discussion, strategy ideas? And if so, is there direction one way or the other? You would like to see those point? Or should we just come back with a menu of issues and ideas for you to pick and choose from?
Mr. Mayor.
Brian, go ahead.
So at the last council meeting, we discussed the rezoning of Second Street, correct?
Yes, and that is, that is underway.
That's underway now with the planning commission?
It, it is. Planning commission voted to, to set a public hearing because of the notice requirements. That won't happen until the end of May, so it'll likely be late June, early July, before it comes to you. And also, it will, while it will rezone, assuming it goes through, it will rezone some areas from, from various business and industrial zones to residential zones. There's very little vacant available land in there. We're talking about established residential neighborhoods. So it doesn't change opportunities for development.
Gotcha.
I move we direct staff to come with some recommendations.
I think we should, we should play with this idea of trying to, trying to nail this down a little bit. I'm personally a little concerned. We, we talk about, and, and good talk about starter homes and, and young families and first-time buyers. We have a neighboring community that decided to kind of not deal with that. Let's build big, expensive homes on 10,000-square-foot lots. And the renters and the young groups, they can live somewhere else. And they seem perfectly happy with that decision.
That'd be silo, Mr. Mayor?
What's that?
Would you say, "Sublimity," Mr. Mayor?
A neighboring community. And it's, I guess it works, but it's not probably where, where we should be. And I, I'm just kind of stuck with that, and I don't, I don't know where to go with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Brian?
What consideration? How about we look at a way of tying in future annexation with MD zoning?
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Sublimity is essentially built out, so is Almsville to the UGB.
That's something I can think of.
Well, yeah, and there's very little developable land left in Almsville or Sublimity or Turner.
It becomes a community decision where, how do you wanna grow?
They're going to come here.
Well, if we, if we provide, we provide homes and, and places for people to live, certainly they'll be here. This is an attractive area. Yeah. I talked to a couple, I don't mean to belabor this, but I, I talked to a couple this afternoon, just coming out of Buy Mart, and, and they saw Gus and wanted to talk to him a little bit, and so, that's fine, we stood there. They were coming from Powell Butte, and I'm thinking Bend. Isn't that where everyone wants to live?
Pilot Butte?
And they said, "Well, but they had kids over here, one in Silverton and one in Lebanon, and grandkids and driving back and forth from Bend in the winter." So they decided to move over here and bought a place in Wildlife Meadows. I said, "Well, Bend's kind of expensive too, isn't it?" And they said, "Yeah, we've put our house on the market, what we thought was high-priced, and we got $10,000 over what we wanted in five hours." And I thought, "Well, that's a pretty active market. That's almost red-hot." But, yeah, this is, this is an attractive place. It will, it will continue to be an attractive place, and, and we need to try to address it.
We, we will be back at subsequent meetings with a, a list of issues and ideas.
That'd be a good place to start, yeah. And thank you again for the, the input tonight. Okay, are we done with that? The staff, there are no staff commission reports. Thank you, staff, for being here tonight, even though it is part of the job. City manager, Keith, anything tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor, I don't. Thank you.
I don't have anything. Business from the council?
I will not be here at next council meeting.
Okay. Okay. We'll accept written, we'll accept written excuses, that's fine. Future agenda items: water management and conservation plan, economic development study, drug takeback, state and family memorial pool update, award of bid on paving. Lance, thank you for that. And proposed downtown code amendments, transportation system plan, citizen advisory committee. Is there anything else? Let's go home.